Present. Travis Council.
Present.
Present. Amber Granite.
Present online.
Online. Kellyanne Kobayashi. Present. David Laia. Present. Jade Lau.
Here.
Present. Mike Lee. Present. Levani Lipton. Present. Shawna Moschler. Carol Miyashiro. Present. Kate Ryder. Claudine Tomasa. Present. Steve Trecker. Evan Weber. Present. Gary Weller. Present. John White.
All right, man.
Present. Donna Wong. Jeff Sukarnik. Present. And Bill Hicks is present. All right, we have a quorum with fourteen members in person and one member online. Very good. First order of business is the election of a secretary to serve until June 30th, 2024. Are there any nominations for secretary? Jade Lau. Kellyanne Kobayashi nominated. Is there a second? Levani Lipton. Are there any other nominees for Secretary of the Board? Kellyanne, would you like to say a word?
Yeah, I look forward to serving as secretary for this term.
All right.
Thank you.
Mahalo, you've done a super job in the last term, so call for the vote. Are there... Well, I guess we do need to take a roll call vote. Josiah Cow. Yes. Travis Council. Yes. Amber Granite.
Yes.
Yes. Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
Yes, and mahalo. David Laia. Yes. Jade Lau. Yes. Mike Lee. Yes. Levani Lipton.
Yes.
Yes. Shawna Moschler. Carol Miyashiro. Yes. Kate Ryder. Claudine Tomasa. Yes. Steve Trecker. Evan Weber. Yes. Gary Weller. Yes, John White. Yes. Donna Wong. Jeff Sukarnik. Yes, and chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Mahalo, Kellyanne. Okay, we have a few announcements. There will be a Kailua Emergency Preparedness Fair on August 26, running from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Kailua Town Center. The Emergency Preparedness Fair is free and open to the public. Clem, are there any comments you'd like to add? Clem and Suzie Januzzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to let you know, as a follow-up to what our chair has stated, that we plan to have a significant number of emergency services representatives to answer questions for the community. Plus, we've also got a lot of giveaways. That always seems to make people happy. And in some, in most cases, it's things that you can add to your to-go list, so you're already prepared for our next emergency. So to reiterate, this is going to be right over there in the long, you know, covered parking lot area where we usually have the Thursday night market. We've got emergency vehicles that'll be there. They're going to do IDing for the kids. And my co-chair is going to give you sort of a listing of some of the folks that are going to be here from 9:00 to 1:00 on a Saturday morning. And this is Clem.
Thank you, Suzie. First of all, Kailua Alert and Prepared CAP and the Kailua Neighborhood Board are co-sponsors of this fair. And as you know, we're in hurricane season. And the National Weather Service Central Hurricane Center saying that we're above average. And we already had one tropical storm pass us by, south of us. And there's Hurricane Dora that's developing and be entering the Central Pacific area on Monday. But it'll be passing right now, south of the Hawaiian Islands. So there'll be two tropical cyclone activity. And one of the things that we want to tell people at the August 26th Kailua Emergency Preparedness Fair is how to be prepared. We find out that about 25% of the population are prepared. What about the other 75%? And they're the ones that will need help in the disaster because they're not prepared. But to show and to teach people what they need to do, we'll have the following. I'll just run off a few of them. We have over 20 exhibitors, including the City County of Honolulu, both Department of Emergency Management, Honolulu Police Department, the Honolulu Fire Department, and Emergency Management EMS, Emergency Medical Service. We also will have Bottom Water Supply, City County of Honolulu Office of Climate Change and Sustainability and Resilience. We'll have Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, the state emergency management organization, used to be called State Street Defense. And we'll also have Hardware Hawaii. Hawaiian, we're still waiting for a word about Hawaiian Humane Society, about pets, what to do for your pets. We have Hawaii State Department of Consumer and ECCA, Consumer Affairs. And the Hawaii State Volunteer Organization, Active in Disaster, Red Cross. We have amateur radio operators as well, HECO, and Bottom Water Supply and other exhibitors. So please join us from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You'll be giving out samples, supplies, and join and find out what's going on. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, mahalo. Again, that's Saturday, August 26, 9:00 to 1:00 at the Kailua Town Center. Is there a question?
He has one.
Yeah, just a real quick question. We're very concerned about preparedness here in Kailua in particular. And we understand there's no certified facilities in this whole Windward side as designated as a certified shelter for anybody to even go to. So that's been our agenda for a while. I just wanted to ask also, is there something in particular that you'd like us from our board to consider advocating on our behalf in the community for preparedness more so than that in particular?
I appreciate your asking. I think that following COVID, we had a difficult time in getting the state to recertify the buildings. Right now, the closest facilities that meet the criteria of a concrete structure that would be without glass windows exposing the people inside, they are founding Kaneohe. So we do have some structures that meet the criteria here. They are not certified. The hospital meets criteria, but it cannot be used as a shelter. So therefore, when we speak with people about what they should do, especially in a hurricane, we encourage them to hunker down because it's better for them to stay at home than to go out and seek a shelter that has not been certified and to be caught in their cars and then in a mass of traffic and not be able to find a place to shelter. In different circumstances of emergencies, whether it is a tsunami or whether we have some additional flooding areas that we've had like in the past, then we do recommend that people leave and they go to higher ground. We are somewhat limited here, but we are prepared to pass that information at the fair to encourage people in ways they can be prepared, using their cars, leave when there's emergency in progress, hunker down if there is a hurricane and they've been caught at home, and to make sure that they don't wait till the last minute to stock up on water, toilet paper, some food that they need to be prepared for, for up to two weeks, given a serious situation. I don't think that we can change the scenario for certifying structures until we are able to improve on some of the facilities that we've got.
And I agree 100% with that. And I know that the schools were considered places for people to go to, but that there are facility upgrades that need to happen at the schools. And I want to advocate at least for that. To me, the hunker down in your home scenario, that's great for people who have homes, but there's a lot of people who don't. And, you know, there's a large community of people that are going to be needing some kind of shelter. And it just seems like putting the money into the schools would make a lot of sense.
It does. I agree with you. And I think if the schools use that logic, that they represent the community as far as a shelter and a central location for folks to gather if there is an emergency, then that would be a wise investment for our county to do and certainly something that the neighborhood board can advocate people to lobby for and for us to possibly vote on in the future. It would strengthen the community support for disaster preparedness.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Comment, Bill, please.
Claudine.
Okay, I'll take the next question.
No, I'm not going to make a question. I'm just.
Oh, there's somebody else. Dan.
Okay, look, we can't go into a 20-minute discussion here. Is there a pointed question?
Yes, I'd like to make a point.
Okay, go ahead.
Not a question. I'd like to urge our representative from the governor's office, from the representatives and senators, to please, please, please contact the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency and have them utilize the funding that the legislature provided to retrofit those schools in Kailua that were once hurricane shelters and to do it immediately. Five years is too long. Thank you.
Yes, the board passed a resolution and that request has gone out to all of our elected state officials. The path forward is identified. It now requires execution by the state. Okay, mahalo, Suzie. Mahalo, Clem. Next announcement, the Oniava Street Sewer Improvement Project. Start date is tentatively set for the evening of August 6th this week. Work will be limited to one-man hole access at a time and performed during night hours between 8:00 p.m. and 5:30 a.m. Information on this project is available at www.onivavasewerproject.com. The Board of Water Supply has proposed water rate increases for the next five years. There'll be a public meeting on Monday, August 14th at 6:00 p.m. at Ben Parker Elementary School. And additionally, we have a presentation scheduled at our September 7th Neighborhood Board Meeting on these water rate hikes for each of the next five years. And final announcement, our agenda has been modified as part of improving meeting efficiency. We'll be using a three-minute timer to improve discipline. Board business of committee motions is earlier in the agenda and reports have been split up. The objective tonight is to start our three presentations not later than 9:00 p.m. Our elected official reports not later than 8:30. So this is the objective. Are there any other announcements this evening? Okay, mahalo. We'll move on to HPD and HFD reports, Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening. Officer Jared Atkins with the Honolulu Police Department, District Four Community Policing Team. The stats for July 2023 are as follows. Motor vehicle thefts, there were 14 versus four in June. There were six burglaries versus four in June. There were 34 thefts in July versus 35 in June. There were six car break-ins in July versus five in June. There were zero robberies versus three in June. And then as far as the yearly stats, there were for the, for July 2023, like there's 14 motor vehicle thefts. In July 2022, there was five. For burglaries, there was six this year, nine last year. Thefts, there were 34 this year, 49 last year. And for car break-ins, there were six this year, 20 last year. So crime is about the same throughout the year. I'll take any questions or comments anyone has.
Well, we appreciate those comparative statistics. Any questions for HPD tonight? Online? Okay, mahalo. Honolulu Fire Department. HFD.
Good evening. Captain Silva with Kailua Fire Station. First, I'm going to go over some previously requested information regarding the helicopter cost that was asked last month. It costs 2.83 million per year to operate and maintain helicopters, including approximately 1.7 million just for the maintenance. The cost of helicopter operations is approximately $1,100 per hour. However, there are many variables and factors to consider, such as insurance, parts purchases, et cetera. Additional costs during a rescue, which include the burn rates of one pilot, one rescue company, two engine companies, and a battalion chief with the chief's aid, are approximately 1,366 per hour. Therefore, the total cost of helicopter operations, including personnel, is approximately $2,466 per hour. Currently, the HFD has three operational aircraft. Stats for July 2023, one structure fire, two brush fires, four nuisance fires, and three activated alarms. We had 117 medical emergencies, five motor vehicle crashes, one mountain rescue, and one hazardous material incident. Fire safety tips. About fire and fall prevention, want to help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders. Implementing prevention and preparedness practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home fire and falls. Some safety tips, stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top. Ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shaker and strobe alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan. When alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call 911 from a safe meeting place using a mobile phone. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. Ask a doctor about appropriate physical exercise. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Keep walking areas pathways and stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. Review your medications with your doctors or your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, directives, and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, questions. Levani Lipton.
Yes, thank you. Can you just repeat the very first part of your report on the cost for the helicopter? I missed that, but I got the overall monthly cost. Please.
Okay, first part was it costs 2.83 million dollars per year to operate and maintain the helicopters, including 1.7 million just for the maintenance of them.
Okay, thank you.
Gary Weller.
Would it be possible for you to email that helicopter information to our chair, Mr. Hicks?
He gets all of this information every month, yeah, that we read.
Thank you.
Yes, it's on the August folder. All right. Jeff Sukarnik.
Thank you. Do you hear me? Do you hear me? Do you know if the fire department has any plans on charging people who utilize rescue services to offset the cost to the taxpayer?
No, I don't.
Any other questions online? Okay. Mahalo, Captain Silva. Have a good evening. Our next item of business tonight is board business on committee motions. We have one committee motion this evening from Planning, Zoning, and Environment. The Kailua Neighborhood Board agrees with Bill Three of 2022 that supports the Oahu Real Property Tax Advisory Commission's recommendation for greater transparency from the Real Property Assessment Division regarding the city's property valuation process, including the recommendation to conduct a land value tax study. The Kailua Neighborhood Board requests explanations for the significant variation in assessed land value for TMK 42061, Parcels 1 through 105 properties. And those discrepancies in land value valuation were detailed in the materials that were circulated to the board. Would anyone from Planning, Zoning, and Environment wish to expand further on this motion? Gary Weller.
Gentleman in that shirt over there, Mr. Yu, he's come to four or five of our meetings and to the general board meeting and has given us an intense amount of information about the situation that we're talking about in this motion. And after reading all the documents that he sent to us, that's what made us decide on doing this motion. So we think it's very valid and it needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Yeah, some of the specifics on these three streets in question, Kahili Street, Laloa Street, and Akumu Street, for these 105 parcels, found the land value assessments on the lakefront properties ranged from 115 to 157 dollars per square foot. And on the non-lakefront properties, they range from 157 to 236 dollars per square foot. And a number of residents of these three streets submitted a petition to the Kailua Neighborhood Board. Mr. Yu, is there anything you would like to add? If you could please use the microphone, sir.
Some of the residents helped me distribute the actual petition that we received 21 signatures out of 105. Maybe it took me about four hours to collect, but I know I could probably get more than half of the people sign. And what they, what you received is a copy of the petition and a copy of the land tax survey that I conducted for tax map key 4261, Parcels 1 to 105. You have that in the handout. And the first handout shows that the methodology that the assessor is using is flawed. It shows that every owner has, the 105 owners have different land values per square foot when you would expect enchanted lakes with 3,500 lots, all of lots look the same, they're all level. Of course, there's the ones that are on the water that should be valued more, but they're actually valued less. The second schedule shows you that the largest slots pay the lowest taxes and the smallest slots pay the most. So given that the last two years, 2023 and 2022, our neighborhood experienced double-digit inflation on the assessed values, going up 100, 300,000 in 2022 and 200,000. So our lots went from a million dollars to a million three to a million five. Seems kind of high. Seems like that inflation rates require some kind of outside oversight to determine how they got the numbers. Because I don't believe that the assessor can show us comparables, sale comparables, that support that tiered system or support that the land values are different for everybody. I don't think they can do it. Anyway, I appreciate the time and effort the board has taken to share our point of view. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your many months of research. And $115 to $236 per square foot within three pretty homogeneous streets. And lakefront properties valued less than non-lakefront properties. The bottom line of the motion is requesting explanations. And is there any other discussion on the motion? John White.
Chair. I think the question we're all, is burning in everybody's head is if there's discrepancy in Uncle's neighborhood, how many neighborhoods have the discrepancy here in Kailua? So hopefully this doesn't open an ugly can of worms, but at least a productive can of worms so we can get to the bottom of this. Thank you for all your hard work, Uncle. Appreciate you.
Well, we'll start with just this one small land value tax study. Other discussion? Online? Yes, Josiah Cow.
Aloha. You know, I hope that how they do it and the formulas they use is something that is transparent. So it's not just about charging the people on the lake more. It's about an equitable thing for everybody in Kailua, so. Will be the outcome.
Yeah, currently, the lakefront properties are valued less, actually. Is there any other discussion? David Laia.
I would just like to ask if after this is resolved, if you would at least share the results of their decisions after.
Well, if this motion passes, it's the Kailua Neighborhood Board that will be requesting that an answer should come to us. Okay, other discussion? Bonnie Lipton.
Just had one clarification to add on to David's comment. And that is that I think this is also a question of process, of how did they get to these numbers? And if it's going to be revised and transparent, what is the new process that they're going to use and the calculations? That would be very helpful to inform the public.
Right, that would be the logical follow-on. Other discussion? Yes, Josiah Cow.
Chair, I just wanted to clarify, what I meant was an equitable, just price-wise, meaning just the correction shouldn't be just raising the cost of the people that live on top of the lake. Then it's not going to change for those that live off the lake anyways. So just saying that hopefully that formula is transparent, so we know that it is equitable for everyone.
Yes, I understand. There ought to be an explanation and it ought to be consistent. No other discussion? Call for the vote. Josiah Cow. Yes. Travis Council. Yes. Amber Granite. Yes. Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
Yes. David Laia. Yes. Jade Lau. Yes. Mike Lee. Yes. Levani Lipton. Yes. Shawna Moschler. Carol Miyashiro. Yes. Kate Ryder. Claudine Tomasa. Yes. Steve Trecker. Evan Weber. Yes. Gary Weller. Yes. John White. Yes. Donna Wong. Jeff Sukarnik. Yes, and chair votes yes. The motion unanimous. The motion unanimously is approved with 15 votes in favor. We'll move on to local agency reports. Board of Water Supply followed by Marine Corps Base Hawaii, followed by Adventist Health Castle. So we'll start with Board of Water Supply, Danny Ornalis.
Hi, good evening. This is Daniel Ornalis with Board of Water. A message from the board this, tonight's meeting. Just a reminder, I know I've been mentioning it at the last meetings, but this week, Saturday, August 5th is our annual Unthirsty Plant Sale. We haven't had this since 2019, so we're finally being able to bring it back. This is held at the end of Eva Anna Road in Halema and is no cost, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, free admission, free parking. Sorry, excuse me. Admission is free and includes a variety of local zerek plants, vendors and informational booths. Come and visit and learn about plant care, pests, backyard composting. We have free mulch and more. And more information is on our website, of course, BoardOfWaterSupply.com. And then I had to answer to a question about the Kapaa water tank. So the question was regarding the new tank to be built, thoughts that it was not large enough to suffice the growing Kailua population. So the response that I have is that the reservoir currently, it does leak and will be replaced by another 1 million gallon tank. Currently, it's a 2 million gallon tank. What's going to happen is they will build a 1 gallon tank, get that one going, getting that to go live, and then break down the 2 million gallon tank. And then they're going to build another 1 gallon tank so that it will total yield 2 million gallons. So that's all I have for that.
All right. Mahalo, questions for Board of Water Supply tonight? Gary Weller?
Did she say that we would end up with 2 million?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, well, we appreciate that significant upgrade to preserve our water capacity. We'll move on to Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Thanks, Chair. Board members, community members, good evening. The Kine Regatta that we hosted on July 16th was a resounding success. So to those of you that came out, participated online or in person that are here, thank you for coming out and we're already looking forward to next year. So we haven't released this to the public yet, but on 18 August, the Camping at Bellows will resume. So if you're looking to go camping, pending any discovery of new nests, 18 August is the target date. Mr. John White for your sports fields. We're open to hosting something similar to the Kine Regatta, like a Little League's baseball championship or football, track and field, something of that sort. We can talk tomorrow night if that works for you, sir. Okay. And the last thing, I want to spend one minute, if I may, talking about some MQ-9 remotely piloted aircraft, some misinformation out there that I've been made aware of. So the first thing I want to hit is that these things, these aircraft are in fact flown by living, breathing marine aviator. They're not autonomous like you see in the Hollywood movies. There's actually two Marines in a ground control station that pilot the aircraft and take ownership of it. So it doesn't have the brain. I know AI is hot and hype right now, but it's not autonomous, it's not equipped to do that, and it will always be under the control of two human beings. Next, there are these ones that are stationed at Marine Corps Air Station Kaneohe are not armed, nor is there any discussion for them to be armed in the future. They're specifically built for extended range and communications relay up and away from the Hawaiian Islands and the waters surrounding Hawaii, i.e. Southeast Asia. And pending any questions, that's all I've got from Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Questions? David Laia?
Yes, thank you. I love the comment about the sports field support there. And if you could share with us a little bit more about what type of support you're going to be providing for that area?
Yeah, so the sports field is on base, right? Or their main primary purpose is for the Marines, families, sailors, active duty service members, retirees to use for physical training, resiliency building events on base. Now, that doesn't mean that they're used 24/7, and we acknowledge that there is time and space available to host youth sports events of some sort. What that looks like, I don't know. I think I'm going to work with Mr. White and see what that looks like. But in our, we're envisioning like, you know, the Little League World Series type thing or if it's football, if it's track and field, kickball, frisbee, I mean, you name it, I think we can get it on the schedule and make it available to the kids.
Mahalo. Other questions? Online? Okay. Thank you very much. Adventist Health Castle, we have Director Brian Hashlock, and we've sort of evolved into a semi-annual update in Februaries and Augusts.
Yeah. Good evening. Nice to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to present on what's going on at your community hospital. First, I want to start with some recognition our organization just received. On an annual basis, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services put out a star rating, similar to what you would get in a hotel or a restaurant. They do it on a one to five scale. Castle received a five-star rating, one of three in the state and one of 483 in the country. So that puts us in the top 10% in the nation. So something for our community to be very proud of in terms of the care and the quality of care that's provided here on the Windward side. In addition, we've also been looking at how we ensure we have the right services to be able to support our community. And we have been on a journey to get Level III trauma services. So what does Level III trauma services mean? It means that we can care for moderate traumas and stabilize severe traumas. Previously, we have not been able to do this. So if you had a moderate or severe trauma, you had to go, that happened, say here in Kailua, you would have had to go over to a hospital on the town side, primarily Queens. Now with our Level III trauma designation that we will get in the next month, it'll allow us to treat patients that have these types of traumas and then stabilize though those that have severe traumas that are better cared for at another institution that has more services available. So that's another thing that we're excited about. The third piece is our emergency department has also now been certified for geriatric services. And so as we recognize in our community on the Windward side, it is an aging population. It's important to be able to have an emergency room that is trained, educated and very much able to care for our kopuna. And so we have gone through a process to get formally designated as an emergency department that has the skill set and requisite training to care for the geriatric population. So something else we're quite proud of. In terms of some new services that will be bringing to the community, we have two new clinics that will be opening in the October timeframe. We have a brand-new primary care clinic. We know primary care is something that's very difficult to be able to get into, really statewide. And so this will allow us to be able to recruit more providers and provide more access to our community for primary care. And then we're also expanding our oncology clinic as well. Unfortunately, the number of cancer cases here in Hawaii and nationally are growing. So it's important that we need to have the necessary oncology services to serve our community, and we will have more of that in the October timeframe. The last piece that I would just update the board on, I know that we've talked about solar for the last couple of years. We continue to work with a locally-based firm to be able to bring solar to our campus. No material updates at this point, but we continue on that journey and happy to answer any questions.
All right, mahalo. Questions for Ryan Ashlock? Evan Weber?
Great, mahalo, Director Ashford and for the presentation. Great to hear about the updates around trauma services. I was wondering if you could break down what Level II versus III trauma, like types of services that you're actually able to provide now, what that means in terms of experiences that patients might be going through, and then also the timing of those, when those services will be available?
Yeah, so the services are available today. We will get the formal trauma designation in the next month or so. We have passed the survey, but there's a board that has to formally say, yes, you get it. So we're just waiting for that. What Level III trauma means is that you have a emergency department that is trained and able to care for traumas. You have on-call general surgeons, 24/7, 365, that can respond to the hospital within 30 minutes, and also anesthesiologists. It gets quite complex in terms of Level II and Level I, Level I being the highest. Level I trauma is what Queens offers. So for example, gunshot wounds, that would be a Level I trauma. So if there's more of an interest in those different breakdowns and some of the things that come with it, happy to share a document that has that. It just is probably a quite extensive explanation that I'm not always the best person to be able to answer all those specifics either.
Yeah, I think if you could follow up with the specifics of that information, I think that is useful for the community to know people, you know, whose families might have different conditions and everything like that. So that'd be great.
Yep, will do.
All right. Gary Weller?
I had the wonderful experience of being in your hospital for almost five days just before the Fourth of July. And I wanted to tell you, and I wanted to go on record, that your care at that hospital is beyond imagination. I was cared for like I was some kind of a king or something in your hospital. No, it was amazing to me. And all the, I told the nurses there and some of the doctors, I said, you must have some magical machine here that slaps a smile on every one of your faces. Because everybody was happy, they were very attentive to me, and I could see that they were attentive to others. And it was a very first experience for me to be in your hospital or in any hospital. I wanted to thank you for that. And now I understand why you got that rating because it really is a special place. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. It's a testament to the great work our team does. So thank you.
Kellyanne Kobayashi?
For the solar project, I was just wondering, like, so there's no updates, but what's like the status, I guess? Like, is any, what's going on right now? If you could remind us?
Yeah, so in terms of the original scope that was communicated to this board, man, it's probably two years ago now, I want to say, the scope has not changed. Really, at this point, is going through the necessary permitting process and doing the necessary financial analysis to make sure it makes economic sense to be able to move forward. And we're working with the vendor on those components. And as it usually does, it's taking a little longer than we would like.
Okay, I think maybe just if we could get an update before, like, construction starts because we don't get surprised.
Yep. No, that's my commitment.
Mahalo. Jeff Suckernick?
Do you have any update of what's happening with the Hawaii Law Campus for the community?
Yeah. Good question. So Hawaii Pacific University continues to lease that property from us. There has been some media attention recently about their intent to vacate that campus about a year from now. So we are assessing and have been for quite some time. We knew that they would be leaving in July of '24. So we continue to evaluate how that campus will be utilized. I don't have any updates at this time, but similar to solar, my commitment is to keep this group updated on what that will look like as we move forward.
Chair, I also have a point of information. I think the gentleman did answer the question, what's the difference between a Level I, II and Level III trauma center? Level III trauma centers have their emergency room, people are trained to handle moderate traumas, and in case surgery is needed, they can call the surgeons in to come in to do the surgery. Whereas Level I and Level II have the surgeons in staff 24 hours a day.
Right.
So the paramedics will make a decision on if this patient needs to go ahead and have needed surgery, go to Queens. If they can be evaluated and have delayed surgery, we'll take the patient to Castle Medical Center.
That's a good explanation. Thank you.
That's kind of what I do.
Great.
Josiah Cow?
Aloha, and thank you for all Castle does for our community. I was wondering if you, Representative, could come to the House List Committee to have more talks on our mental health issues that we have here for our community. I think that's a big concern, and if possible, can get with our chair for that. It's Levani Lipton. Thank you.
Yeah. I think if I heard you correct, it was hard for me to hear you, but to attend the House List Committee, and if that's the case, happy to. If I could just get when those committees occur, happy to have someone from our organization attend.
Mahalo. Levani Lipton?
I will email you. We probably will be meeting in September. So I'll email you.
Yeah, happy to.
Any resident questions for Ryan Ashlock? Carol Abbe?
I'm sorry, yes. I was wondering if Castle has evaluated their, how they process, like when the police bring in, you know, someone that they've picked up, you know, where, well, actually, it's a case that happened last November, I guess, where they picked the guy up in Waime Nalo and took him into Castle, and then he was released, you know, half an hour later, and he ends up breaking into a house in Olomana and then dies. And, you know, I was wondering, so I was wondering if that, or in general, Castle has evaluated how their procedures work for cases like that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I mean, we're constantly evaluating our processes. Unfortunately, related to that specific case due to federal HIPAA requirements, I can't comment on that specific incident in detail. But certainly, our commitment is to ensure our community gets outstanding care and they're cared for appropriately and then discharged as appropriate. I will also say that our organization cannot hold individuals against their will. So if they make a decision that they want to leave the facility, we can't be in a position to hold them there.
All right. Ryan, thank you very much for the update.
Appreciate it.
And congratulations on the five-star rating, the Malcolm Baldridge Award, and mahalo for taking good care of Gary Weller.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on now to resident and community concerns. If there's anyone, we'll start in person and then go to online. If there's anyone here who would like to raise a concern, please come to the microphone. Bob Burke?
Aloha. So nice to see everybody here. My name is Bob Burke. I used to live over in Enchanted Lakes, and I still have three kids who live in this neighborhood. So every now and then I like to come back and see you folks. I got two pieces of news, one good and not so good. About 15 years ago, the city did a study about how to prevent pollution going into our waterways in 2008. And one of those studies said they were going to put some devices on the curb inlets. And so they put 110 screens on the inlets around the Enchanted Lake area. They also put 31 big boxes, about this big, inside the drains to catch all that stuff that comes in so it doesn't go into the canals, waterways and lake. When we checked these boxes about six months ago, we found that they were all completely full. And through Levani's committee, we found out that when they were installed in 2019, 11 years after the study, in that time until just a little bit earlier this year, they had never, ever been cleaned. So Levani's committee sent a letter in, and I went back to check today, and all of them have been cleaned. I talked with Jimmy up at Bayshard, who runs the Bayshard. Bay Yard, and his crew came out and they cleaned them all in July, which is a very good thing. But I would like to report they're all now half-full. So that one storm that we had filled those baskets half-full. So I would like, Levani's committee doesn't meet this month, but next month, we would like to hopefully urge them to clean those baskets on at least every three months to make sure that those pollutants don't stay, don't go into our waterways. The second thing, which is not very good, is that we have a severe mangrove problem coming up in the waterways again. They have been cleaned in some areas, such as the Hamakua Bridge. When the city, when the city obtained that parcel from A and B, A and B cleared all of the mangrove along both sides of the canal. The condominiums on the left-hand side, looking downstream, have maintained their frontage, and there's hardly any mangroves growing. On the other side, there's all kinds of mangrove. And if you don't take care of these mangroves today, it's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean up in the future. So we need to get on our city to clean up the mangrove problem in our waterways. So it doesn't cost us literally millions of dollars five years from now to clean it up. Thank you. Gary?
Mahalo. The Kailua Water Quality Subcommittee does meet next Thursday here at 6:00, Thursday, August 10. And it's a hybrid meeting, so it can also be joined on Zoom.
I'll be there.
Mahalo. Gary Weller. Two things, Bob. One, whatever happened to the siphoning project? And two, A and B still owns that land. It was, it's never been accepted by the state yet. So just to clarify who the owner of that park still is, or that parcel.
Very good. I thought that transfer had gone through. If it hasn't, then we need to make sure they remove all the mangroves before it gets transferred. Again, I don't know what's happened to that project. It has been funded several times through our state legislature, but it's never been implemented. Every time the funds have been allocated, the funds get allocated to a different project. So I think we need to take care of that in the future. Thank you.
Levani Lipton.
So I have a follow-up to your question. The last time I asked about the siphon project, no pun intended, I think the funds got siphoned to something else, just like you said. So we will, we'll have to stay on it. But yeah, part of, part of this is just keeping the issue out in front. And this is not an issue that goes away. It's just that it becomes a lot more visible when we have big storms. So the issue persists, and there's so many contributing factors. But I'm really happy to hear that the catchment baskets have been cleaned. That's fantastic. Kudos to the city.
Okay, Randall Hugh is mentioning that some of the mangrove are on property owned by Kamehameha.
I'm just saying that all those mango, mangrove trees that were referred to, that are on the lake, are on the Kamehameha School parcel that's adjacent to Kukulakila. And it's not a city problem. It's an owner issue.
Two different parcels being mentioned, but good to know.
Okay, Levani Lipton.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hugh. We'll look into that. But also, when we're talking about mangroves, mangroves grow right back. So actually, if we want to remove the mangrove, what I've learned in my committee is we have to remove it, like, at its very beginning of the root, which is a huge job. So, yeah, we have to get all the seeds out, all the babies. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Do we have other resident and community concerns this evening? Yes, sir, if you could use the microphone, please.
Good evening. While we're talking about roots, I think this is a good time to talk about affordable housing again. Thank you, everybody, for your continued aloha and support. I'm going to read really quick from my notes. I know I have a short time. My name is David Santana. I'm a recent transplant here. I'm an acupuncturist. And on behalf of myself and some of my neighbors who couldn't make it this evening, I'm here to talk about the 60-foot, six-story building that's being planned at 330 Koolauay Street, across the street from the school, next to the intersection of Auliki and Koolauay. This is going to be 60 foot, six stories. It goes against the Colt La Poco Sustainable Planning laws that dictate that commercial building cannot exceed 40 feet. Bill seven and Bill eight allow the building of affordable housing up to 60 feet and fast-tracks the approval process, absolves developers, who in this case is the Ahi Group, Maconia Maeva, from the Koai Nui Project, 330 Koolauay LLC and their affiliates, from having any obligation to tell the public, and no permission is required from the neighborhood boards, no neighborhoods, no neighbors need to be alerted. So those laws, Bill seven and eight and Colt La Sustainable Housing Law, those are in direct contradiction with each other. So Bill seven, according to the Bank of Hawaii, says this. Property owners who build affordable rental housing are eligible to receive 10-year waiver on property taxes, 90-day permitting process that dramatically speeds up development, waiver on permitting fees, waiver on car park, bike parking requirements, waiver on elevator requirements, waiver on wastewater and facility fees and hookups, the ability to exceed normal height restrictions or lot line restrictions for building to higher density. So this is going to set a precedent by, you know, setting a precedent by offering waiver for wastewater responsibilities might not be a great idea because of all the wastewater things that we've been talking about in the last couple of months. This building is built, it's going to block the sun for myself and my neighbors, the wind, the view. Apartments are going to be 20 feet away facing into ours. Most of our neighbors have no idea, and many like myself will lose a lot of money and time and frustration. We'd be facing at least a 50% increase in going into the rental market. So, you know, even, even our councilwoman has, has moved to the other side of the building because she knows it's kind of inevitable. I think she bought on the other side. And Senator Chris Lee tells me that there's a possibility to switch lands, that when there's public lands that need to be built, and maybe there's a project that's not ideal for location, a swap can happen where like a library, police station, public meeting place like this could be put in a place where it would be better suited, and maybe the developer could have a different parcel of land. That's something that would need to be discussed. Chris Lee says it's a possibility, but would have to be done rather quickly. And there's a lot of other things. But in, talking about treating the root, I think that the number of housing, affordable housing buildings isn't the real issue. It's a manifestation of the issue. I think it comes from unregulated short-term rental markets. This is just my very, very brief, is that three minutes? Okay, I'll stop.
As you know, the Kailua Neighborhood Board passed a resolution noting the apparent conflict between the sustainability plan and Bill seven for these specific cases and less than 20,000 square feet. And Councilmember Kiaina has also asked for Corporation Council legal determination on this conflict. The information that I was provided by Department of Planning and Permitting, when I asked them a question of, in another part of Oahu, in an urban part, that might have in their sustainability plan, a 250-foot building height, and someone on one of these less than 20,000-square-foot lots wants to build affordable housing under Bill seven, would they be allowed to go 250 feet in height? Because that's what the sustainability plan allows. The answer DPP provided was no. If they want to take advantage of the benefits of Bill seven, they have to comply with all the requirements and restrictions of Bill seven. So in that case, where you otherwise could go to 250 feet, they would be actually limited to 60 feet. So it's DPP's position that, that Bill seven prompts the sustainability plan in both directions. It limits the building. If the plan's higher, it allows up to 60 feet. In our case, where it otherwise would be limited to 40 feet.
Interesting.
So that, I thought that was an interesting answer from DPP.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the root of it. And perhaps Councilmember Kiaina, when she, you know, receives feedback from Corporation Council, might be able to add to that answer. Thank you.
Bill?
Jade Lau.
In going over our correspondence, I would like to first point out to Esther, if you could review the CC that you received, because the deputy chair at DPP did not address our concerns in any way, shape, or form. He talked all around it, but did not address the only issue of concern that the residents of Kailua have, and that's the height. 20 feet doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot. And the letter that we got back from DPP talks all about stuff that we didn't even bring up. I mean, we didn't say we didn't want affordable housing. And for the record, I would like everybody in this area to understand, there is a huge difference between affordable housing and available housing for people that can afford it. Because again, we go back to, the guidelines of affordable housing are 170,000 as the median income. That starts, for those that don't understand. And while we're on this topic, I want to step out and use this opportunity to ask our governor's representative to take back to him how absolutely irresponsible in his emergency proclamation, we are going to house people at the expense of the infrastructure, at the expense of the safety, at the expense of the people who already live there and are not allowed to do what they need to do to support their own home and families. But yet, if you've got a friend in the right place, guys, you can avoid all of the rules, all of the requirements, and make a profit. That's the message that we are sending to every damn developer out there. You see a piece of property in an area, forget the community. And our governor's made it clear, he's not the least bit interested in what the citizens that pay for his job to do. It's unacceptable. And what voice do we have anymore? Because now we've been walked on and stepped on and trampled over. This is the same individual, one more second, this is the same individual who made it very, very clear. Her interest is her checkbook, not any community member here. If anybody in this room was present for what happened at Koai Nui Street, here we go again, guys. Only this time, she has a friend in the governor's office who basically said, we don't matter. We as citizens, we the people, we the people. Now is the time to start making noise, people. There's not much more. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have an opportunity to have discussion with Governor Green's representative coming up. Thank you very much. Are there any other resident or community concerns for this evening? Yes, sir?
Aloha, my name's Andreas Hilkinger. I'm a resident of Kuhukama Street. I'm following up my recommendation that I made to this August board last month, as well as the email that I sent to you, Mr. Hicks, regarding the update to the obstruction project at Kalapau Y project, at kalapauyproject.com. My hope is that we can get some sort of accountability that DTS can then put onto the construction project so that it is able to keep some way, shape, or form of a deadline, since we've been promised that we're supposed to have progress updated at the end of June. It's now no longer July, we're now into August. They've since opened up the left turn lane from Lani Kai into Malka Bound onto Kailua Road. But anecdotally, what we've seen on Kuhukama Street is we have not seen any reduction to the traffic, which is, that is the smallest amount of traffic, is only one-third of the amount of traffic is Malka Bound on Kuhukama, and about at least 12, it's 3,200 cars travel Makai Bound and 1,300, or excuse me, 1,100 travel Malka Bound on Kuhukama. And I will reiterate that over 90% of them are speeding. Speed limit's 15 miles an hour, at DTS's own data, as I afforded to you, sir, and should be available to all the city members. They are, 90% of them are speeding in excess of the speed limit. So I would like to again reiterate my recommendation of an update of that construction project, which appears to continue to fall further and further behind in hopes of some accountability and/or speeding up of this process. Thank you.
Mahalo. I know that Kelly Akasaki is online.
I'm online.
Kelly, did you want to address this now or later as part of the mayor's report?
I can address it now as an update for our project. Yes, phase two is taking us a little longer, but we have been keeping on schedule and we are moving along every day. We were off of schedule for about a month from April to May, which pushed us back when we did find the Evi Kupuna at the site. However, we have already started phase three. I'm not sure if you've noticed, but we have already moved into phase three while we finish up most of the concrete work in phase two. The roundabout and the stamped concrete and the curb and gutters have all been in place in the last couple of weeks. I mean, we're moving as fast as we can, as fast as the weather will let us. One speed table is already in. We are working on the rain garden this week, and, and we already did open that left turn, like he mentioned, for, I guess, the Kani'ohi Bound traffic to turn up Malka Bound on Kailua Road. So we're trying to do our best to help, you know, alleviate some of the traffic and the cut-through. We are moving into phase three. We will be opening both phase three and phase two at the same time at the end of this month. So while phase two is taking us a little longer, phase three is pushing in right along, and we've already started phase three before phase two has ended.
Is there, is there an estimate when, when traffic will no longer require a detour?
Okay, so once phase two and three is completed, which is all of the Makai Bound traffic into Lani Kai, then that lane will be open. But then that means we will be starting on the Malka Bound leg, which would be on the Beach Center side. So that will be phase four and five. But at least we would be having all the traffic coming into Lani Kai and Kailua, be using the roundabout, and be coming in Makai Bound, which should alleviate majority or almost all of the detours that need to come through Kuhukama Street. And even for Kuhukama Street, we have detoured all the buses to use Koolauay. We've put up delineators on Kalahill Ave so that they cannot make a left turn onto Kuhukama. Again, it's the residents who know the area. All of our detours are not showing Kuhukama as our detour right now unless they are somehow working around that, that area to try and get into the Beach Center. Otherwise, if you're coming out of Lani Kai and you don't need to go to the Beach Center, most people are going down to Koolauay.
Kelly, is it possible for DTS to request speeding enforcement from HPD for that detour?
HPD is coming out on the weekend, so Saturday and Sunday, HPD will be out there because we did open that left turn at Kalapau Y Market. So we are having HPD out there from late morning to early evening to make sure that now that we opened that left turn, it doesn't back up traffic all the way into Lani Kai. But they have also on their side, you know, been boosting up enforcement whenever they can. But they have also, on their side, been boosting up enforcement whenever they can. Again, HPD is super short staff, and they get all the calls from the residents, and they've been helping us to do whatever enforcement they can. I know they've been out there in the last couple of months way more than they've been in the beginning of the project. So we're all trying to listen, we're all trying to help their short staff. So I'm trying to ask them as much as they can to, you know, go in the neighborhood and try and see what they can at least observe. But, I mean, they handle from Kuhuku all the way to Waimeanalo, so.
Evan Weber.
Yeah, another follow-up question for DTS. Mahalo for that information. The Kuukamaa-Kainalu intersection is extremely dangerous right now with the increased detour in traffic. Last month, the board passed a resolution for a permanent four-way stop there, but I'm wondering if there can be temporary, like, stopping or alteration of the traffic flow while the detour happens? Because I think there have just been tons of accidents that have happened, and regardless of accidents, lots of near accidents, altercations. Yeah, I see the resident nodding his head over there. So is it possible to make temporary changes to the traffic flow there, increasing stop signals and things of that nature to increase resident and pedestrian and automobile safety?
We can look into it. I'm not aware of the accidents. I mean, that hasn't come to our department as an intersection that's been having higher accidents recently, but we'll look into it definitely from our side.
Yeah, it's definitely a thing, and I think just probably everybody in Kailua has experienced this because we've all driven, had to drive around there as a result of the detour. But just, you know, anecdotally, I've been having residents reach out to me as a neighborhood board member, DMing me pictures of different car crashes, multiple incidents, just in the last few weeks, so.
Sure. We'll go back and look into that.
Residents just requesting a schedule or an agenda item update for the roundabout project. Our screen fell over.
Okay, so they're still on schedule to be completed by next summer. They have until the end of next year to be completed. They want to get out there as fast as they can as well. So that is still our schedule. We have nine phases. We are in Phase 2 and 3 concurrently. 2 was the longest and the most difficult because of the roundabout. And then we will move on to Phase 4 and 5, which is the Ma'aka leg, and then we work on Phase 6, 7, and 8, which is Kalahaila Avenue. But they are still on schedule for completion of next summer of 2024. They have till the end of 2024 to complete their project.
Mahalo, and appreciate the update, which I think we'll continue to include as part of the mayor's report. Are there any other resident and community concerns?
Carrie Weller. Can I make a suggestion to you? On the mainland, here in Hawaii, you have these little trailers that the police has that tell the public how fast you're speeding. On the mainland, they actually put that device that you've authorized to give tickets on those devices. And maybe you should investigate that when you're doing a project like this, and you're going to put traffic through a neighborhood where there's children and stuff, and cars are going 50 miles an hour, you should get one of these units that can actually tag these speeders and get them into court and find them. The other thing is, is I've seen a device on the mainland where they take speed bumps that are temporarily nailed down to the ground in construction areas to stop people from speeding. These are just two simple ways that you could slow down those people that are driving 50 miles an hour down a 25 mile an hour street. Thank you.
Yeah, that might require a change to Honolulu ROH, but it's something to look into. We'll move on to the next item, which is the mayor and governor reports. We'll start with Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. Do we have Jim Ireland, or we have Shayna?
Yes, hi, good evening, it's Shane Enright for...
Shayna Enright.
Yes, I hope you can hear me, for Director Jim Ireland in this evening. And I don't have too much to report tonight, but a couple of updates. One is, the first is on Pohakapu Park. The question I do believe was, who does oversee that park? It is a city park, and we will be following up on it. I know there was some questioning about the bushes over there, so if it still has not been trimmed, we will be following up with DPR on that one. Another concern was brought up about a no parking sign on the corner of North Kalahaila, closest to the address of 959 North Kalahaila. A service request has been put in to replace that sign. And soon as the resources become available, I'm guessing that means the sign itself, they'll be putting that up. So we'll try to have an update on the sign next meeting. And I do apologize, I didn't have an update for the bathrooms at the parks. I know that was a big concern. Last time, I spoke to the director this evening about not having an update on that, and he said he would speak to the mayor directly about it and ask me specifics on that, and I gave them all to him. So I asked just for your patience, please, on that one, and we'll have an update for you next meeting in September. That's all I have, Chair.
Okay, we'll look forward to that update. Questions for Shayna Enright? Levany Lipton?
This is not a question, just a follow-up suggestion. It's always helpful if we know what the protocol is or what it will be. So when we're given an update, especially with something like the bathrooms that so many people are concerned about, if we can get a report back on what steps are going to be taken, what actions are going to be taken, not just to remedy, but also, you know, keep it sustainable, so with regularity, that would be very helpful to us. Thank you.
Evan Weber.
Yeah, mahalo, Shane, for following up about all of our inquiries. Really do appreciate it. Yeah, just on the bathroom thing, I guess it would be helpful to hear more exactly what your conversation with the director was, because the director is going to talk to the mayor directly. Doesn't exactly, it sounds fancy, but it doesn't exactly inspire a whole lot of confidence, like, what, is Rick Blangiardi going to come over here and just with a barrel of toilet paper in his arm and stick it in the bathrooms and fill up the soap canisters? No, this is a structural issue about staffing, about logistics. And so our question is, why is this not happening? Kailua is not the only bathroom around the state that is having these issues of cleanliness, hand soap, toilet paper, et cetera. So just more details on what exactly the conversation that you had was, and if, I don't understand why Rick Blangiardi would have the answer for why those things are not happening, and what talking to him is going to do about it.
Well, he is the boss, so we definitely want to go to the boss when we have any major issues. And again, we found this to be a major issue, so that's why we're going directly to the boss. We cannot speak for DPR. We didn't have an answer to the question tonight, so we decided to go to the main boss, who will have an answer, and he will get that answer from DPR. So we will come back to you in September with an update, with specifics.
It's a big issue. It's a chronic issue, and we certainly appreciate upgrading it directly to ensure that the mayor is informed. We do appreciate that. Other questions for Shane? Carol Abbe?
Yeah, I wanted to report on the Pohakapu Park. I mean, I had walked past the fountain on my way to the Castle Farmer's Market for the first time, actually, even though I live right close. And then there was this, like, sheet on the ground by the fountain and a pair of slippers and the... So at any rate, I finally did what I've been meaning, and I submitted it to the 311 app with two photos and asked them to please clean up the area. So let's, and that was just this morning. So let's see how fast that works. I hear it's pretty efficient. Thank you.
Okay. Mahalo, Shane.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Governor Josh Green's representative in person, Erin Connor.
Good evening, Erin Connor, representing Governor Josh Green this evening. We have one follow-up question from last time about the wastewater, stormwater runoff and the fines imposed by the state to the city. Department of Health reported that the money collected through the fines are deposited into the Environmental Response Revolving Fund. Monies in the revolving fund shall be expended for removal, remediation, and detection of oil and pollutant or contaminant releases, and/or removal and remediation of hazardous waste and other solid liquid or gases, substances that may be harmful to the environment. So that's where the money collected from the city is going, and that is what they are allocated to use those funds for.
Okay. Questions for Erin Connor? Any resident questions online? All right, well, Erin, I've got a question.
Sure.
This is a math question.
Okay.
For the last several years, the commonly accepted number for housing unit shortage on Oahu has been 20,000 units. So we've had a historic 20,000-unit housing shortfall on Oahu. Since then, there has been a crackdown on illegal vacation rentals. There have been an estimated 10,000 housing units that have been used illegally for short-term vacation rentals. With the city's crackdown, if successful, these 10,000 units will, in relatively short order, be converted from short-term vacation rentals into long-term housing inventory. Now, they're not affordable, but for those who would buy or rent those places, they're vacating other places, and, you know, there's a food chain effect. But the bottom line is, there's a potential that 10,000 vacation rental units added to the inventory would cut in half the Oahu shortage of 20,000 down to 10,000. Additionally, in the last couple of years since the pandemic, we've had net migration out of the state. The state's population has gone down. To the extent that there is reduced population, that historic 20,000 housing unit shortage might also be lower now because of that. So when you work all that math, the question is, how is it that the emergency proclamation established 50,000 housing units as being necessary on an emergency basis? How does that 50,000 reconcile with 20,000 less whatever from vacation rental conversion to long-term housing and ramifications of a lower population? What's the math that created an emergency need for 50,000? Just math.
Just math. I will double-check with the team on that one.
Okay.
Bill, if I can make a quick comment, Bill? Just another kind of request?
Yes, Travis.
Sorry. Just another request for the governor would be, basically, this is a broad request, but a recommitment to Vision Zero. That's an effort to reduce our traffic fatalities and fatalities on our roadways. Hopefully, the community knows, but just yesterday, we saw a person biking in Waimeanalo hit and killed by a person driving. And we had another fatality in Kailua at the beginning of this year, just last week, a fatality on Maui, all on state highways, state roads. So we'd love to see the mayor, sorry, the governor's commitment, in which I think he will, but would love to see that trickle down through the departments to commit to seeing some big change here. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
All right, our objective tonight was to commence elected official reports by 8:30, and if it weren't for my long-winded question, we would have made it. All right, so we move on to elected official reports this evening, starting with Councilmember Esther Keiina.
Thank you, Chair. I actually wanted to thank the board for taking action on Bill 3 and for reminding me what it does. I just realized that Chair Waters and I introduced it. As many of you know, last year, we had a lot of RPT bills, and we actually didn't get hearings, and that is why we had a change in leadership in the Budget Committee. For the first half of this year, we focused on real property tax credits and home exemptions. So in light of your resolution, I will bring it to Chair Waters. And with regard to Mr. Hughes' report, I pledge that in June, I will talk to the auditor. They have looked at it. While they were not going to do an audit on his specific report, they are looking to do an audit on real property taxes in general. So what I'm thinking of doing is getting a hearing and move Bill 3 through the process. And perhaps, so we will take your resolution to heart, but the city council has every right to give the city auditor parameters for the audit. And I'm sharing that so that if you collectively or individually have mana'o, please let me know. And as a reminder for everybody who's interested in the real property tax credit, or if you haven't filed for home exemption, October 2 is the deadline, and Roz is going to put in the links in the chatroom. The only other thing I wanted to talk about was invasive species, as you know, is a real threat, particularly in Waimeanalo. So on August 21, from 6:00 to 7:30, we are having a Windward Town Hall on invasive species to specifically target little fire ant, coconut rhinoceros beetle, and koki frog infestations. Clearly, if they do not prevent it and control it or eradicate in Waimeanalo, it has the potential for spreading along the Windward Coast. So I would highly recommend for you to come. It's in-person. We are likely going to have the chairs of the Department of Agriculture and DLNR, as well as the Director of Parks and Recreation. And we are also inviting our federal stakeholders, a DoD, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, USDA, AFIS, and the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board is taking the lead. And that's my report.
Mahalo. Questions for Councilmember Keiina? Online? Resident questions? Well, we certainly appreciate the property tax relief and your support for the explanations on how the land value assessments are arrived at. We do appreciate that.
Thank you. I wish it was higher. And what we're looking at next is the impact to renters for non-occupied homes. Residential A properties have skyrocketed as well, and they're passing on to the renters. So we're looking to provide relief for that category. Thank you.
Okay. Mahalo. Senator Jarrett Ehokaloli. Senator Jarrett Ehokaloli.
Aloha, Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Three things real quick at the risk of getting in a lot of trouble with everybody here. The first is that I serve on the U.S. Indo-Pacific Command Joint Information Sharing Forum related to the Red Hill defueling. If all goes according to plan, they should be approved to begin defueling the tanks this fall. Hopefully, they'll be well underway by Halloween. I've spoken with some of the communications staff at IndoPecom, and I've asked, since we did have during the crisis, an agenda item before the board, I did ask that they make themselves available to the boards across Oahu, including this one, if you'd be inclined to request for some information or a briefing on the status of that. I'm also on another informal working group that's pursuing federal legislation to remedy the remediation efforts, which are tremendous on the level of the Koholave cleanup. The federal efforts to clean up Koholave were not successful, as everyone knows, so we're going to try and work diligently to do much better on that. The second thing is, I'm going to reiterate, in light of the governor's emergency order, I'm going to reiterate my predecessor, Senator Laura Thielen's request in 2018 that this board consider a subcommittee on housing that came in the wake of the failure of the Kauai Nui housing process. I've tried to be pretty open about housing and the affordable housing process and our problems on the Windward side, which means I don't necessarily agree with everybody in the room on these issues. There are state pieces to this, there are county pieces to this. They do not work well interchangeably. The emergency order fundamentally attempts to shove them all in a room and create a sort of super 201H process, which I can completely understand, given the board's position and dialogue on this over time, why that would be so problematic. If you organize and you make specific requests of, the short is, you organize and make specific requests of the legislature and of the governor's office and that team, there are mechanisms that the board and the community can demand are taken into account when projects are facilitated in this area. One example would be specific expectations and requirements around the one public hearing on a project. I'd be happy to help coordinate experts that can come in and talk about financing, about why, when we lose these affordable housing projects, the money and the housing go elsewhere in the state of Hawaii, principally to the neighbor islands, which is, if you follow the demographic data, where much of the outmigration on the Windward side is going to the Big Island. So it would be an opportunity for a much more robust conversation about it and maybe some better engagement. And the last thing is to validate and supplement Councilmember Keina's work on invasives. There was a town hall I just came from in Kahalua around Little Fire Ant. It is a very concerning situation. This board is far more organized and active than others, and we really do need your help and engagement. Happy to talk after. Thank you.
All right. Mahalo. Questions for Senator Ehokaloli? Jay Lau?
Hey, Jarrett. My big upset here is we sent a letter clearly stating, we're thrilled to have an affordable housing project, which I'd like to mention in looking at the rent, suggest the recommended rent amounts on affordable housing project. It is currently the market value of Kailua. $1,800 for a one-bedroom. That's currently the market value in Kailua. So it's not really affordable, so to speak, at least the demographic they, the media wants us to believe they're targeting. In the letter we wrote, we clearly said, we have no problem with this project with one aspect, that 20-feet height variation. It's the only thing we have a concern with. We support all other parts of that project. The letter we got back spoke all around it, never addressed our one concern. They gave us excuses and answers for everything under the sun that we never brought up or are concerned with, but yet no mention of addressing the height issue concern. And that's the difference of one entire floor.
So really briefly, I think that's part of why I'm reiterating the request, that if there is enough concern and interest on the board, perhaps a subcommittee might be a venue that I could work with the group on that, or we can take it before the full board to get the appropriate people in the room to specifically answer those questions, because there is an element of people talking past each other in these conversations, which I don't think is helpful at all.
No, we appreciate that. Our Planning, Zoning, and Environment Committee is where these related issues develop and are considered. We could have a subcommittee of Planning, Zoning, and Environment, or we could continue to keep it in PZNE. I'll discuss that with the committee chair, Donna Wong. But even without a special subcommittee, we do have a committee that, you know, that's appropriate. And our letter to the city indicated that we support affordable housing and that we found the location to be suitable. And the response attributed to us a position that we didn't think it was suitable. Our letter said it, we found it to be suitable. It was properly zoned. The only issue was the conflict between one law and another law. And, you know, so they're working through that.
It is a valid conflict. The state subsidize affordable housing funding mechanisms, create really powerful incentives for density, and in return for density development, they allow the usurpation of county zoning to do things like height variances and things like that. So I think it, you know, your point and the correspondence was valid. We can just get the HHFDC guys to come and have a discussion about this, but perhaps the larger board meeting is not necessarily the best venue for that kind of in-depth conversation.
No, Planning, Zoning, and Environment.
Sure.
And we appreciate your dedicated efforts on this issue. Other questions? Evan Weber.
Yeah, real quickly, Senator Ehokaloli, I just wanted to say mahalo for your comments on housing, and I really resonate with the intent of what you're saying. One of the reasons why I ran for the board is because I'm very concerned about affordable housing here in Kailua, and I would love to see the Neighborhood Board take a more proactive approach in actually organizing to make a plan for it to be a reality and not just by saying, yes, we support it, but not in this way and not here and whatever. And I'm not saying those concerns aren't valid. But, you know, for me, I was born and raised here in Kailua, I'm 31-years-old, and so for my generation, it's very personal. I'm very lucky to be housed and be housing secure here in Kailua, but most of my peers do not have that privilege and luxury, and many of them have left Kailua. So when we talk about keeping Kailua Kailua, it's about keeping Kailuans in Kailua. And the people that were born and raised here and have spent generations here, that means Kanakamali, it means Kamaaina. And affordable housing is not about whoever else you think it's about. When we talk about it in Kailua, it's about local residents, and we need a proactive plan for the next generation to ensure that residents remain here. So whether it's through a subcommittee of planning and zoning or some other mechanism, I really appreciate you pushing against the grain, and I know that other people on the board do share that, but we need to be proactive instead of reactive and push for things instead of just against. I just wanted to, mahalo.
All right. Carol Miaschero.
Hi. I agree with what's been said with regard to affordable housing, but I also want to point out that with, you know, to the extent we're increasing density and our population continues to, you know, seems more and more congested in Kailua, you know, we don't even have a viable hurricane shelter for any of our Kailuans to go to at this point. There's too many cars on the road that are in conflict with pedestrians and bicycles, and they're speeding like crazy down these residential roads. Our water quality is suffering. Our schools are kind of run down. We don't maintain our parks that we have here in beautiful Kailua. You know, we've got to look at the infrastructure, too. I mean, so it's not just about density. If we can't do density and make sure that there is some infrastructure and focus on maintenance and the well-being of those of us that live here in Kailua and other neighborhoods, then it's all for naught. So again, I think there needs to be a balance somehow.
Okay. Gary Weller.
I'm on the ants. I have a suggestion for you. Your newsletters and talking about the ants and Keina talking about the meetings in Waimea Nalo, for the layperson out there, they think about these issues as being an agricultural issue, which they are. But many people know that I have an animal shelter, and literally, the ants will eat a pet's eyes in minutes. So if the general public understood more of how it would impact everyone instead of just the ag industry, you might be way more effective persuading people to help on many of the invasive species. So that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
David Ley.
I also want to echo with regards to the little fire ants and the coconut rhinoceros beetle. The little fire ants, I visit my family on Lapa Hoi Hoi in Big Island. We used to walk in the forests and be able to just enjoy the area. But those little fire ants will drop from the trees, and they'll just be everywhere that you go, and you can't really do anything about them, and they sting. And it's almost like it's pervasive throughout. And if anyone ever experiences that in Oahu, I think you will see how devastating this little fire ant can actually be to our community and what we enjoy today in our regular daily lives. We have a chance to stop it now, and anything we can do to put energies on that now, the sooner the better is really what we need to do. I understand that there are seven outbreaks on the Windward side.
There are 17 active infestations in Pola Poco.
17 active ones. And if we can jump on that now, we have a chance. And to be real diligent about it as a priority. The other one is the coconut rhinoceros beetle, and that's, my understanding, that I was actually found to have been brought in through the military facilities. Yeah. And I wonder what the military is actually doing to be very proactively engaged in this process of dealing with this devastating pest that's killing large trees and valuable crops. You know, if they have kuliana for the things that they do, it seems like they should be stepping up a lot more to address these issues. Thirdly, there was a committee and a bill passed with regards to the helicopter tour activity and a task force that was created. We haven't heard anything about that task force since that bill was created. We were told that the Department of Transportation was going to appoint the committee chair and that the Transportation Committee was going to step up and do something, but this matter has not even been addressed. And it is a loss, so we're supposed to have this task force. And I just want to just bring this thing back, because it seems like nobody's really paying much attention to that.
Thank you. I'll double-check on the task force. This board was active, and part of why the governor, the prior governor, elected not to veto that bill was, I think, directly because of the engagement of the community, including you guys, which is part of why I ask for proactive or offer proactive solutions with this board, because I know you guys are willing to do the work. I will follow up on that. I know we're not supposed to be going on and on, but really quickly, I would really encourage everyone to do some research online. Look on StopTheAntHawaii.com for the infestation areas. They have a map of Oahu. There are four sites in Kailua. There are 11 in Kaneohe, and I think two in Manawili. Go to the Waimea Nalo briefing. These ants are very bad news. They colonize trees, the only ones in the world. And also, they have koki frog problems in Waimea Nalo that are really disturbing. 10,000 individual frogs was the assessment that the Department of Agriculture admitted to at the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board after some really diligent prodding from the members of the board. I am frustrated that we were not made as acutely aware of this during the legislature. We organized in Kaneohe to stop and eradicate an infestation of fire ant in Kaneohe in 2019, and so it's very frustrating to be in this situation right now. There's no way the legislature is going to be able to take action before next summer. The community is going to have to get involved in order to stem this. So talk to me after, or, you know, help us out. Thank you.
Okay. Mahalo. Mahalo for your three-minute report. Questions extended to 16 minutes. We need to move along.
As our timekeeper, we have one hour, one hour left.
Representative Natalia Hesse-Burdig.
All right. Aloha, everybody. It's good to be back here with you in person. Give us just a moment while my lovely office manager, Nadia, shares screen on my presentation. All right. So there's my contact information as usual. I'm very Google-able. Next. So I did just want to give a really quick update on the Kailua wastewater treatment plant. As we know, there was that $430,000 fine last time we spoke. I told you I was unable to find out where the money was coming from and where it was going to. As Erin from the governor's office mentioned, it is going to the Environmental Response Fund. It's coming out of the city and county environmental services general operating budget. They say they can kind of move enough money around with their vacancies and stuff like that to fund it. They assured me that it is not coming out of their deferred maintenance fund. Next. And then you can sign up here to get notices via email from the Department of Health on every stormwater runoff advisory, every wastewater treatment exceedance. Highly recommend signing up via email. Next. I wanted to thank Representative Lisa Martin, Sidney Wesley, Dofa, for organizing the Hamakua Marsh cleanup on July 15th. It was really great. Next. We also got, there were 52 people that showed up, and I thought that was amazing. We were able to rent kayaks that were generously donated by Kailua Beach Adventures. Thank you so much for that. Next. And I saw at least like 60 bags of rubbish, six car tires, five shopping carts, two sleeping bags, a bicycle and extra bike wheels, one office chair, and a big box full of engine oil. So it was a really awesomely productive event, and I can't wait to do it again. Next. Dofa let me know today via email that they are working on a management plan for Manawili Falls. They're going to have a meeting with Councilmember Keina, Representative Matayoshi, and myself to kind of give us an update, and then they're going to go to the community and ask for community input. It's a little bit too soon to go over the details yet, but I will keep you informed as we go along. Next. And I've been back at the legislature a little bit more often. We're working on policy now, so I think Rep. Martin, Rep. Matayoshi, and I are all on the Majority Policy Committee, where we actually get to help shape policy priorities for the House. So we're open to suggestions. Feel free to contact my office if you have any ideas, and we'll be in touch. That's all.
All right. Mahalo. Questions for Representative Hesse-Burdig? Gary Weller?
We were told that a couple of meetings ago that the DOE wouldn't start doing these. We were told that a couple of meetings ago that the DOE wouldn't start doing composting again or selling composting again until a study was completed. And on nextdoor.com, I think I sent it to you, they were actually selling compost again. So I was wondering if you'd look into that. And then the second thing with DOE is I learned today that one of the stadiums at the schools is going to get $7.5 million to fix the lights. And my question is, why weren't they taken care of all these years so we didn't get to a point where we had to spend 7.5 million?
Slight correction. The 7.5 million is, so it's Kailua High School. The 7.5 million is because there's some water in a ditch behind and below the athletic field. So the 7.5 million is actually for the repairs to the athletic field itself and to correct that water damage. There's a new problem with the lights. And so the DOE is working on an estimate of how much that's going to cost. That's going to be one of my COP requests next year. There is a lot of deferred maintenance all around the DOE and the state. You're absolutely right. It's one of those stitch in time, save nine, save a penny for a dollar later kind of thing.
I don't know if we can ever change this in Hawaii, but on the mainland, the principals of every school create the budget for the school and they take care of the maintenance of the school. And they're more based instead of way up here with all those people in the DOE that do nothing. The schools are where the center of the economics of the school district occurs. And we have this philosophy over here where the schools and the maintenance of the schools and what goes on in the schools is all up here somewhere. And really, the people that work at the school all the time, they know where all the problems are and they see all the problems, but we never listen to them. So somehow this has to change.
I completely agree. And I got to say, that's one of the major reasons I voted against the budget this year. We underfunded the Department of Education by $57 million below their request. And that's $57 million that would go into items like this that they cannot fix now. So we're working on it. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? David Laia.
Couple, the $430,000 Environmental Response Fund that just received the funding, can that be somehow applied to address the LFA and the CRB?
That's a good question. It was my understanding that the ERF is specifically about waterways. That's what we do to address oil spills, that molasses spill we had about 10 years ago. That's the funding that goes to that. I can, you know, it does seem to me like a valid use. I'll look into that and see. That's a good idea.
If not, then my next question would be, where is the funding for this type of thing? And what's the status of that? Secondly, you brought up in previous presentations that legislators were given the budget sort of last minute, not being able to get much scrutiny and involvement in the budgeting process. And I'm wondering if you could be addressing that in your policy discussions?
Absolutely. And we have been in discussions with the Finance Committee Chair leadership about it. The issue isn't so much timing. As with every other bill, we get 48 hours to review. It's a matter of there's not enough specificity in the budget line items for me to know what's in there. So the first responders campus, for example, was like hidden in a line item that didn't say first responders campus. And so I've been telling them, and I'm standing firm on this, that I need not just a 48-hour review process, but you either need to give me the budget worksheets that have more specificity in them before I vote, or we need to go through, right before crossover, the Finance Committee does like a day-long sit-down where they all go through the line items one by one and fully understand the budget. And I'm telling them that is the wrong time to do that. The before crossover budget doesn't really matter. What matters is the final budget that we vote on at the end.
So I'm just hoping you could address that in these discussions with your policy issues.
For sure. Have been and will continue. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on with Representative Lisa Martin.
Hi. Aloha, everyone. Sorry you don't have a symphony there to entertain you tonight, but it was amazing the turnout last night. It was really a great event. I am going to put in the chat here, for those that are online, information about a stolen bike database. This is something that actually passed, not this last session, but the one before, but it took a while to get up. I happen to know three people in Kailua that just in the last couple of months had their bikes stolen, not on the street, but from their locked vehicle, locked garage. So higher-end bikes that get resold. And the idea of this database, which will not work unless we have public participation, is to allow people before they buy a used bike to check and see if it's a stolen bike or not. And if it is a stolen bike, they can not buy it and not be part of the problem and they can report it. And the other part of that bill makes it a crime to offer a bike for sale that's listed on the database and nobody has to prove that you stole it or that you knew it was a stolen bike. It just has to be listed and you don't have to have looked at it. And then you are simply fined. So you don't have to prove state of mind. You just get a fine, either the value that the bike was offered at, the value it was sold at, or $500, whatever's higher. So this is something that I found out was live. By chance, a friend who works for HPD texted me and told me, Lisa, we used your database. And I said, I didn't even know it was live. So this is something that I'm going to do a little campaign to try to get people aware of. And this is, you folks are my first stop. This is something that everybody who buys a bike that's used could use and we can eliminate, hopefully, the profitability of stealing bikes. So that's one thing. Another thing people have asked about the Kaiba Ridge Trail, and I wanted to give you a little update. The funds were allocated, they were released to do trail upgrades, but we were waiting on the EA. And they say the final draft of the EA will be ready the end of August. And in addition, the area's been declared a hotspot in the Oahu DMAP. So that means that the Oahu Visitors Bureau has funds to maybe help fund stewards to be at the trailhead and to do a test online reservation system, which would be free and would not be restrictive in terms of total numbers, but would try to spread people out during the day and could be linked to a free shuttle to try to alleviate some of the parking problems in Lani Kai that are associated with this trail that is unfortunately love to death. So that's an update, that that is, some things are moving forward with that. I wanted to comment on the all-day discussion that was had about the mangroves. It reminded me, people in Kailua do not like surprise. At Hamakua Marsh, we just got the clearance to start building a hale there. So we will build as a shelter for the people that work on the forestry project and the students that come for field trips. So it is not a tourist thing. It is not going to be used for a new kind of visitor. It's just for ongoing forestry and education. Currently, there's no shelter from the weather. And that, we will actually harvest the mangrove from across the street. So we will clear just a little bit of that mangrove that was under discussion. And hopefully, we'll get ours before they clean it out as part of the transfer of the property to the state. I'll just leave it there and see if there's any questions. Sorry, one more thing. Just all the talk of invasive species is a little frustrating for me because I had bills for both coconut rhinoceros beetle and little fire ants this last year. Was already very focused on these. And we did pass, get some coconut rhinoceros beetle funding in the budget and passed a little fire ant bill, but not with the adequate levels of funding. And I'm really glad that the community is getting more focused on these issues because we really need that community outrage and support to get the kind of funding we need. The infestation of koki frogs in Waianalo could be the foothold that spreads it to all of Oahu. It's the efforts there. I've been up there. It's very, very steep. It's really hard to access. It went from one valley to three valleys and that's while they were doing very, very consistent manual control measures the whole time and one helicopter drop. So we are losing the battle, but hopefully not the war. Same thing coconut rhinoceros beetles. There was 89, they found 89 incidences in Waianalo this year. So there's likely local spread. It's not just green waste being dumped there anymore. So it is a problem. The little fire ants are on plants in the nurseries and when they sell those plants to Kailua and elsewhere, it spreads the little fire ants. So hopefully, nurseries would never knowingly sell it, but people have to check. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. As a reminder, we have three presentations tonight. Are there any questions for Representative Martin? David Laia.
Lisa, thank you. I mean, clearly, the infestation of the koki frog and the little fire ants is occurring through the nurseries that import plants from the Big Island.
That's correct.
I'm wondering if we are being very proactive about shutting down that activity and enforcing whatever the restrictions are that would prevent that from happening over and over and over again?
I have not heard the conversation about shutting down that activity because it is so economically important to the Big Island and probably to the nurseries that resell. They talk more about, you know, there are control measures in place and they talk more about improving those control measures. But having said that, if we can't control it, that is probably a conversation that needs to be had. And we certainly can't eliminate solutions from the discussion.
Okay. Mahalo. And we move on to Senator Chris Lee. And Representative Scott Matayoshi. And Nicole Gray, representing U.S. Representative Jill Takuta. Talisha Passi, are you there to represent Jill Takuta? Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. So basically, just some updates for the Congresswoman. She did do her Takuta in your town recently, yesterday in Hilo. So Takuta in your town is kickstarting to be like an outreach kind of thing for the Congresswoman and our staff. They will be going out to communities to help constituents navigate the federal government and its agencies. She's very committed to making sure that you guys have an advocate on your side so that you can access all the federal government benefits that it can provide. These can range from passport issues, IRS, immigration, social security benefits, veteran benefits and more. If you are interested in the Takuta in your town, you can go ahead, go on our website for updates. But also if you're having trouble with federal issues or need assistance from the federal government, you can go ahead to our website, takuta.house.gov. Another thing to flag is an upcoming town hall that we're planning in Waianalo on Wednesday, August 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The location is still to be determined. We're still working on it. Other things, we have the Military Academy nominations. We are now accepting it up until October 16th of this year. If you're interested in that, you can also look at our website. And yeah, that's all so far.
All right. Mahalo. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Now we have reports from members who attended other meetings in the past month. Okay. Well, we're going to move on to presentations. It's 9:10. Missed our objective a little bit. We're going to start with Oahu No-Pass Zones for Protecting Water Resources. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair and members. My name is Erwin Koata with the Board of Water Supply. And I'm going to give you, in the interest of time, give you a kind of a summary of our, what is called the No-Pass Zone. I'm going to share my screen here. Let everyone see that.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So again, thank you. Ernie was, our manager-in-law, was not able to attend tonight and he extends his apologies. Quickly, the No-Pass Zone is essentially the area defined over our drinking water aquifer. There we go. The drinking water aquifer is under our island. It is formed by rain that falls on the island over time. Along the coastline, there is a very impermeable marine sedimentary layer called caprock, which actually holds the water from releasing or leaking into that ocean. As the time goes on and as the rain accumulates, there forms a freshwater aquifer or zone in the subsurface. And there are parts of the aquifer that are along the coast that are very thin or don't produce as much water as opposed to parts further inland where the aquifer is very thick and can produce a lot of water. So this map shows where the caprock area is in relation to the drinking water aquifer. There are different sectors, all different names of it. But for the most part, along the coastal area in that shaded light blue is where the caprocks are located. So from this, the board developed the 1982, the No-Pass Zone. The No-Pass Zone is, again, defines that area where we can find fresh water. So parts of here are caprock. There are other parts here that contain no fresh water. It's basically lava rock that doesn't have any fresh water. So we created these rules in 1982. And it was a process for evaluating the installation of any kind of waste disposal facilities and to give the board the opportunity to comment on those requests for installation of waste disposal facilities. It requires any kinds of plans for these different types of waste disposal facilities to come before the board for review and approval before they can proceed further. There's an entire process within our rules and regulations for submitting information for our review, our ability to now make a ruling, the manager can make a ruling. There's also appeal process in the event that the applicant doesn't agree with the decision that's made. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Mahalo, Erwin. This presentation came about at Gary Weller's suggestion when he was on PBS discussing where possibly the next Oahu landfill will go. And the existence of these No-Pass Zones based on the ability of contaminants to leach into the water supply or not. If there's no water supply there, no fresh water there, or if there's caprock, then that becomes allowable for citing. And for the other areas, it's not appropriate. And educating ourselves on this was the objective tonight. Are there any questions of Erwin Koata? Gary Weller?
I made a suggestion to Ernie the day when I was at the public television station. That... I made a suggestion to Ernie the day when I was at the public television station. I fail to understand with the GIS mappings of where the no pass zones are, why we in Kailua had to be subject to the possibility of a landfill being here in Kailua when the maps definitely show that it shouldn't be here, and, and Ernie spoke to this. So I fail to understand why the other city departments aren't using the data from you and just not even proposing things in the no pass zone. It's almost like the city's two departments, the Board of Water Supply and Waste Environmental Services, don't speak to each other because there was no reason to make everybody in Kailua think that we're going to get another landfill over here because the entire area was in the no pass zone. And why it was even considered by the landfill committee is still mind-boggling to me. Can you speak to that at all?
I think, let me put on the pointer here. One of the areas of, if you take a look at this map, where the caprock is over this area, and this area is shown as a drinking water aquifer, compared to this map where this pink area here is called the pass zone. So this particular area is, I think, the area of concern, and the reason why it is not, it's, it's a pass zone in this particular area here from, pretty much from the Wailei to Kanihoi area, is that it's within the pass zone because there is, there is no water-bearing rock in this area. There's no fresh water here. And so the, the no pass zone defines where there is fresh water as opposed to the pass zone where there is no fresh water. So it either has caprock, or in this particular area here, it doesn't have any fresh water because it had really eroded dikes all the way to the coast because part of the Kola volcano slid off into the ocean, exposing the dikes along the northern rift zone. So really, the no pass zone is just defines the areas where we know to have fresh water. So that's why some areas were considered just because of that now. And so this, this particular map is available, and we're, we're, it is available to the city for them to evaluate and look as well.
So it looks like Kapaa Kauri is actually in a pass zone.
Yeah. Remember, this, this no pass map was created in nineteen eighty-two. So prior to that, it didn't exist. So everyone had to, for the most part, rely on this particular map that kind of identified where the fresh water is, number one. And there was really no board rules and regulation governing this particular part about waste disposal facilities and whether or not it's acceptable to place it over the drinking water aquifer. So like the Kapaa was put in prior, prior to nineteen eighty-two when this regulation didn't exist. So there's some of that transition that's also incorporated here.
Other questions? Kellyanne Kobiyashi?
I was just wondering, so I see like in your slide that the department, like, is granted the power to establish these zones. So are you guys able to amend the maps and get, is it going to change over time? Like, how likely are the zones going to change? And how often is this change, like, tracked? And can it be updated?
Well, the, the zone is based on the geology and the availability of fresh water, which is, for the most part, geologically set. And so any kind of changes doesn't happen in short periods of time. It's going to happen over hundreds of thousands of years. So for the most part, this map and the designation of, or definition of where the no pass zone is going to be is going to stay constant. It's not going to, it's not going to change. Even the caprock area, the caprock area is fixed. It doesn't, it doesn't move or it doesn't change in any kind of way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Travis Council?
Just a, a quick point of clarification off of Gary's question. Based on this map, Kailua and much of the Windward Side is in a pass zone, AKA does not have drinking water below it.
Right.
Thank you.
That's correct. But remember, in citing the landfill, they had to also consider other restrictions. One of them had to do with population, proximity to that population, a number of different kinds of restrictions. So many of these places, although they may be in the pass zone, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to comply with those different restrictions. As a result, would have to cause the landfill not to be sited in these particular places.
All right. Well, mahalo. Are there any other questions? All right. Excellent. Thank you, Erwin.
Thank you.
Next presentation is 126 South Kalahia Avenue, a draft environmental assessment in SMA, and we have Peter Vincent, Peter Vincent Architects.
Thank you. Aloha and good evening. I'm Peter Vincent with Peter Vincent Architects. We are the architect firm working on the replacement residence at 126 South Kalahia I'll be very brief and be able to answer questions after in the interest of time. Before I get started, I would like to mention that we did send certified letters out to all the abutting neighbors. I know a couple are here this evening, and we've had some direct communication with a couple of the other neighbors, two other neighbors as well. So thank you for attending. Okay. So this is our beautiful beach, which is pretty much in front of the lot in question. Next slide, please. Just location map. You can all see where it is. Basically, it's beachside Kalahia and is about halfway between Kaapuni Drive and Kailua Road. It is a long, narrow lot, about seventy-five by five hundred feet. And on the left, slide demonstrates that the lot is in the SMA area, so we are seeking a special management area permit. In the center is the flood insurance rate map, showing that the property is not in a flood zone. It's in Zone X. And on the right is the State of Hawaii sea level rise map, which indicates that the lot is not impacted by the three-point-two-foot sea level rise zone based on the SLR XA maps. Next slide, please. These are photos of the site currently. I mentioned it's a replacement residence, and there was a residence on the site previously, which has previously been demolished. And the site is currently vacant and has some remnants, concrete slabs, some gates, and some miscellaneous elements which will be removed. Next slide. On the top of this slide is the topographic survey of the property. It's roughly flat, but there is a couple feet of variation from one end to the other. It's a little bit higher on the street side until you get out to the sand dune at the Makai end of the property. On the bottom is a shoreline certification. It's currently a certified shoreline that is Makai of the Makai property boundary. Next slide, please. This is just a point of reference. I know the board is familiar, and as are the neighbors. There was a previous owner that had bought the property about two years ago, who was intending to build residence on the property. And this is the design that had come through the board in their process of seeking a, in their environmental assessment of the property, which was approved. They received the finding of no significant impact and received a final environmental assessment. At that point, about a year ago, that owner sold the property, and I'm working for the new owners, which is a married couple with young children. So the prior design, it filled most of the property. It was by a mainland architect. I heard the term kind of keep it Kailua, keep Kailua, Kailua, or Kailua-ness earlier in a prior presentation. And, you know, I would, I would say in my personal opinion that this prior design did not do that. And next slide. And these were some of the elevations, so you can kind of see on the side elevation. It pretty much filled the property. Next slide. So our, our design, I've been working in Kailua for thirty-four years, and really our, my whole design philosophy is to build and design in a sympathetic way for each location. Certainly, Kailua is a special place. I've been a resident here for thirty-four years, and that's, that's what I like to design to do. So this is kind of a concept image slide, just showing our beach and some of the history and materials. On the upper right is a traditional Hawaiian canoe holly, and that kind of is the design concept for this project. Next slide. So this is our site plan. We intend to have more open area. Basically, our client wants to have a place for their kids to play and just have a little, a lot more outdoor area than what the prior scheme had done. The design consists of two dwellings and a detached garage. Each of the two dwellings has a one-story pavilion that is a modern interpretation of that Hawaiian canoe holly that you saw on that last slide. The, the main dwelling is comprised of five bedrooms and four baths, and the second dwelling is comprised of four bedrooms and four baths. There's also a pool and some, so have edible gardens. Next slide. Let's say three D bird's eye views of the property. We built the adjoining houses in our CAD model, so they're shown roughly as amassing in white. On the right is looking from the beach side, looking toward Kalahia Avenue in the back right. And then on the left slide is looking from the road toward the beach. The garage is one-story with solar panels above to provide electricity for the project. Will also have battery storage, car chargers. And the building, the houses along the Waimeaalo side property line are mostly two-story, and then the pavilions on the Kanihoi side are one-story, the canoe holly pavilions. Next slide. Oh, I, I'm sorry. Go back. Yeah, thank you. So part of the design is to keep, you know, it's a very long, narrow lot, as I said, so it's, you know, we were kind of keeping the taller elements for bedrooms and things along one side. It's still a ten-foot setback on the Waimeaalo side, but to keep really an open Malcolm-Makai view corridor from the ocean to the mountains so that on the beach or even on the street, there's a little bit more of a view corridor there rather than just blocking the entire width of the lot with a two-story mass. So it has that whole Malcolm-Makai concept as part of the design. Next slide. This is what you'll see from Kalahia Avenue along the street. Would be a fence and gate. The materials, as you'll see in a moment, will be very, you know, commensurate with what you'd expect in Kailua, sandy, beachy, earth-tone colors. These are coral walls, driveway paving with lawn joints in organic pattern. Again, the garage on the right you see is set back from the road and is one-story, so it has a very inconspicuous frontage from the street. And the gate will be set back at least twenty, twenty-four feet from the road to allow cars to pull in and exit without blocking the road until the gate opens. Next slide. This is a view from the beach side, a little bit more of an aerial view from the beach because at the beach, you'd be down. You'll see that in the next slide. But here you see the canoe holly on the right. There's a lanai on front and back. In fact, each of the structures has lanais on the Malcolm-Makai side, so it's intended, intended to be very indoor-outdoor relationships between the structures and the, the gardens. And we're placing equal emphasis on the outdoor garden areas as we are with the interior areas. And on the left here on the Waimeaalo side is the main dwelling, two-story. Next slide. And then this is more of what you'd see down at the beach level. Next slide. Some of the materials I mentioned, so we've got some board form concrete with probably a coral mix, sand, light stone flooring, coral or fossil stone elements, some reclaimed wood siding and wood trim, wood beams, and corrugated metal roofing, commensurate with kind of an old Hawaii look, keeping it very casual but giving a lot of texture to the roof. And I mentioned the PV panels, which would be on the garage, so we don't intend to put PV panels on the roof. So the roofs will maintain a very clean architectural appearance, and they're all sloping roofs. Next slide. Lastly, just our data on the project. So the zoning on this property, the property is thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty square feet. The floor area ratio per the land use ordinance is point seven, and that allows a floor area of twenty-six thousand twenty-six square feet. And we're proposing twelve thousand four hundred and one feet, less than half of what's allowed. And of that twelve thousand square feet that we're proposing, a floor area about thirty-three hundred is covered lanai. So there's actually about nine thousand square feet of interior area between the two dwellings. I did mention there are two dwellings, but I want to be clear that this project is for one family. It will not be rented out and will be solely for the use of this family and their guests. It's because they're too detached. We detached the dwellings rather than make one much larger, single structure, and it, that, by doing that, it creates more garden landscape area. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. This is also on the agenda for our Planning, Zoning, and Environment Committee meeting next Thursday. We want to get the full board presentation up front, and then if there are particular drill-down questions, the, the committee then has an opportunity next Thursday. So that said, are there any questions for this evening? Gary Weller?
Just some thoughts. You can explain this to us at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, but if I remember right, the last time he was going to have significant air conditioning systems on the roof and pool pumps, and that was bothering the neighbors. And so I wanted you to explain to me at the Planning and Zoning Meeting how you're going to take care of that. Then I just read something the other day, and I'm not, you're probably more familiar with it, but since seawater rising, a realtor just explained to me that they've changed the measurement from the high sea mark to where you can build on the property. It used to be some figure, and now it's a greater figure. Are you familiar with that at all?
Yes. Are you talking about the shoreline setback?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's currently, the law is forty feet, as it has been for many years. That, there's an approved bill that will be, take effect July of twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, to change that to sixty feet plus a factor times the erosion rate. So it could be more than sixty feet. Some lots will be significantly impacted. In fact, I looked at a lot in Lani Kai where the setback will be a hundred and seventeen feet.
The last time this came in front of us, we were all so concerned because he was going to have significant pools on his property, and then, of course, digging in the ground and burial bones and kapuna and all that. So maybe you can address some of those things that I just mentioned at the Planning and Zoning.
Certainly, happy to.
Thank you.
And I need to correct myself. I misspoke. The Planning, Zoning and Environment Committee meeting is the third Tuesday of the month. So it's Tuesday, August 15th at 7:00 PM at Kalama Beach Park. Okay. Mahalo. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you had a question? Okay. We'll move on to, and, and more detailed discussion at the PZNE meeting on Tuesday, August 15th. Third presentation this evening is the Kailua Neighborhood Board 2023 Survey Responses. Levani Lipton.
Hi, we have the, I have the survey ready, but apparently I'm supposed to give permission. And I have a firewall. Yes, or ins. All right, here we go. Okay. Have to leave the meeting and come back in. Sorry for this. I did. I did just do an update to our board folder for our neighborhood board. All right. So here we go. So we've been doing, we've been doing these surveys. Actually, they started, I think, before even I joined the board, but I've been helping out with them for the last couple of years. So our chair, Bill Hicks, tabulated the results. And this year, the survey was quite long. We had a lot of questions. So I'm just going to go through this rather quickly, given our time constraints. So this year, we had 132 responses and almost everyone identified as Kailua residents, which is really wonderful because I think you get a more authentic response. We offered it both online and in person. And part of me wonders, like, if we didn't have as many questions, maybe we would have gotten a higher response rate. But nonetheless, it was very rich in the data that we collected. So, yeah. Can you forward to the next one? So the, the responses of residents in Kailua, most of whom have lived here for over two decades, and the highest amount of responses came from the age group of 65 years plus, our kupuna, which we love our kupuna. They are full of wisdom and context and history. But I also see an opportunity for the second largest groups, which is 44 to 55 and 55-plus. And also members of Evan's generation, we need your voices to weigh in on these issues because this is your future. So the third question asked about the impacts of tourism. Are you concerned? And of course, people are concerned. Ranking in the top three concerns was the quality of parks and beaches, which you've heard tonight. Traffic was a really big one as well. And the quality of our waterways and ocean, which is protecting our natural resources that we have here in Kailua. So this was an interesting question. Most people felt that the actual community doesn't benefit from increased tourism. I don't know how to explain that, but maybe folks who are not either in the industry or maybe benefiting might feel that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't help them in their livelihood. This was also an interesting question. Have you been disturbed by vacation rental in your neighborhood? A resounding 75% said no, and this may be in response to recent policies where they've been directed at targeting illegal vacation rentals. We asked questions related to each of the committees that we have here on the neighborhood board. This question came up tonight or was referenced really by Jade and her comments. Do you support relaxing building ordinances to allow buildings taller than Kailua's current 40-foot height limit, which is highlighted in the Ko'olapoko Sustainable Communities Plan? And most people said no. So not a surprise for us, but it was good to get it affirmed. Also, people have asked us why we do this survey and we do this survey really to inform us on whether we are tapped in to how the community feels about certain issues and which ones we should lift up and prioritize. This also is a zoning question. Do you support reducing front, back, side yard setbacks and granting waivers to eliminate current parking requirements to increase the development of affordable housing? And most people also answered no to this question. Public safety. There is a lot of concern on public safety, although most people still feel that Kailua is somewhat safe. People do feel, even though they feel, they feel safe, they also feel that crime has somewhat increased. We asked a couple of what we call narrative questions, which are open-ended questions where people could further elaborate on, on things that are important to them. And it gives us a little bit of a deeper dive into more generalized questions. So 35 of the respondents said that they did file a police report if they witnessed or were a victim of a crime. And the biggest ones were theft, home robberies, car break-ins and assault. This list is very interesting, I would, I would think, even for our elected officials because there's so many things mentioned, both in terms of concerns and also some suggestions for our community. So people are most concerned about theft and burglaries. This one asked about which type of crime are you most concerned about? Homeless confrontation. I don't know how people distinguished between homeless confrontation and vagrancy, but not everyone answered all of the questions, but these were the ones that rose to the So what suggestions do you have for helping to make Kailua a safer community? So some of them focused on transportation and public works, public safety, and some were focused on law enforcement. I think we've heard this come up in neighborhood board meetings before, more police presence, reducing homelessness, Neighborhood Watch, which was a question that we actually did a deeper dive into, and then funding and helping the mentally ill or houseless population. Enforce traffic laws, that's also a big one. This is available to all neighborhood board members and also elected officials. And I believe we have linked the raw data on our Facebook page and I can put up these individual slides on our Facebook page as well. So.
It's also in our meeting materials, Google Drive, which is also available to everyone.
That available to the public? It is. Okay, great. So you can email Chair Hicks if you need the link or it's also included, I think, in the agenda. So this is kind of a continuation. So there were several different categories. This is a continuation. Social services, tourism management and economic. These were just categories that I grouped the responses So it seems like not very many people belong to a Neighborhood Watch group. So I always look at this as an area of opportunity. And I know that we do have a board member who is interested in doing outreach on this. So those who did say yes came from the communities in Enchanted Lakes, Coconut Grove and Olomana. And then these other communities listed had, you know, maybe one or two people who cited that they were a part of their Neighborhood Watch group. And then for those who answered no, this was interesting, almost half would be interested in participating. And then they came from these communities, in Enchanted Lake, Moore and Coconut Grove, Aikahi, Kalama Beach, Lani Kai, Manawili, and then many other communities that we know and love and have friends in Ohana. Two minutes. Okay, thank you. We will just zip right through. So these are actions to beautify Kailua. Increased maintenance and cleanup of public bathrooms, that was number one, followed by improving green space. So this is a deeper dive, but you can see some of the main ones. The ones on the left were more common. Most street medians has come up a lot in our board meetings. Do you support replacing all of the trees that have been removed in the last 10 years? So resounding 75% said yes. Lot of concern for water quality. Not five was the most concerned. And so we had, it was, it was divided, but we had over half who said that they are very concerned about pollution in Kailua's streams and ocean. And then this was a more deeper dive where people cited things that they were worried about. This was a narrative, open-ended question. Wastewater, because we've heard a lot about it, but also Kelepuulu Stream and storm water, brown water runoff. That's when Kailua Bay turns brown from all of the sediment and things emptying into it after a storm. Most people felt city is, city and state are not doing an adequate job of maintaining the cleanliness of our waterways. So room for improvement there. Over tourism. So this came up tonight by Rep. Martin. Do you support an online reservation system? 69% said yes. Parks and Rec. Should Kailua Beach be regularly cleaned by the city and county? 94% said yes. How often? And this was kind of a mixed bag of responses. I guess we'd have to do the research on when, but there's a lot of microplastics and debris. This was discussed a couple of months ago. Do you support reversing the city's current ban on commercial activities? And 81% said no. So we don't want commercial activities. Park ranger program, there was support for that. And then this is what they, what respondents wanted the park rangers to focus on. Homeless outreach, public safety and enforcement of unpermitted and unlicensed commercial activities. Those were the top three. These were the areas where people most frequented when it comes to our parks. Kailua Beach Park, of course, and then their neighborhood parks. That was kind of nice to see. People are generally have mixed feelings, I guess, about the impression of our parks. The parks are beautiful, but they're not well-maintained. So this was a list of what folks wanted the city to do. Long laundry list of things, but lots of good ideas. We're almost done. Public safety, this was tsunami inundation zone. You notice that the signs have gone up. In Kailua, we've been waiting for them for seven or eight years. We're very, very happy that we're seeing tsunami signs that have been erected at the beach parks and as you enter Kailua and leave Kailua. And most people did have an evacuation plan. Of course, we don't have a shelter here, but it looks like folks were informed, but there's room for improvement in terms of outreach. This was mixed. This is for Chair Hicks on his transportation committee. Some people felt it was safe. Some people did not feel it was safe. And then more suggestions to improve pedestrian safety. So this might be something you want to look at more deeply in your committee. Chair Hicks, lots of good ideas here, lots. And then this was just additional feedback. We asked folks if there was anything that wasn't discussed on the survey, if they had any additional comments. I thought this one was interesting. The ones that are bold are highlighted, I thought were interesting. Eliminate noise pollution at night from delivery trucks. We did hear the folks over in Olomana who were concerned about, or Pohakapu, deliveries to Wendy's. So that, that may be in tandem with that. Keep emergency training, public awareness. Repair the vector state where we have our planning, zoning and environment meetings. Repair the Kailua Beach Park hale roof, the canoe hale. And so we thank you for your participation. We will do our best next year to make it a bit more concise, but we do thank everyone who took the time both online and in person. This helps to direct our work. So thank you.
Mahalo, Levani, for the excellent presentation and challenge to get through it quickly. A lot of data there to inform us. Thank you very much. Next item of business is approval of minutes. Any corrections or changes to our July 6 minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Committee reports. Would any committee chair wish to expand upon any of their committee reports? Okay, reports as stand. Committee membership motions. I looked at that to-do list for Transportation Committee, Levani, from the survey. And so we have a new chairman of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, Travis Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill. One last thing on Bill's plate, but I'm sure he'll still be helping a lot. So thank you.
I, I will remain on Transportation and Public Works Committee. We also have new chair of Public Safety, Public Health, Civil Defense Committee, Carol Miyashiro. We thank Claudine Tomasa, who's chaired the committee since its inception after Fukushima 12 years ago. And Claudine is going to continue on the committee. But mahalo, Carol.
Hard to follow in Claudine's footsteps, but I'll do my best and I'm glad she'll remain a committee member. She got the tsunami signs up. It's her doing that made that finally happen.
I, I think that's why she's stepping down. It, that has been the huge milestone. And Committee Chair for Parks and Recreation Committee. We, we don't have a chair. And this is a terrific committee. And I would encourage our members, maybe our new members, to consider becoming chair of this committee. Please, please let me know if you're interested. Are there any changes to committee membership? We asked new board members to take a look at our committees and see if there are committees that they would like to join. If so, it has to be approved by the board and this is the agenda item to facilitate that. Would anyone like to join any of our committees?
I have spoken with both Gary and Levani about joining the government and community committees and the water subcommittee. So I'm interested in joining those. And then, as I expressed earlier today, I'm interested in housing issues and and so I'm also interested in joining the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Terrific. Anyone else? Okay, please, please think about it for our next meeting. So we have a motion to add Evan Weber to our Water Quality, Government Engagement, and Planning, Zoning, and Environment Committees. Is there a second? Gary Weller? Any discussion? Any member object to Evan joining these three committees? Hearing no objections. You're added to each of these committees. Thank you very much. I think you're going to find it very interesting and rewarding. Our committee agendas for September are due by August 27th, and this meeting is adjourned at 9:56. Mahalo.